We are going to open the workshop for the Public City Council. Please stand and you pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Summer Madison, position one.
Chip Bradley, position two.
You got unmute, sir?
Sergio Martinez, position three.
Phoebe Skinner, position four.
I'm Tammy Kaufman, the mayor.
Nice to meet you, we'll be charging Jordan White, please.
Remember to speak in gymnasium voice. We have Anthony DeGonge and Judy Fritz from the city. So tonight, I want to remind everybody that our city council is a little different than some of the other organizations, and we are formal in our council roles. So if you know somebody's last name, please address them as such. So for example, it will be Councilor Skinner and Councilor McGilvery, and I'll try to remember all yours, and I've written myself a cheat sheet. We just try to keep decorum and keep it professional, and it works pretty well for us. We do want to give everybody a chance to speak if they want to tonight, but we are going to start with our presentation and what we want to talk about, and then talk with our partners that are having the same issues that we have, and that we have to figure out a place, time, and manner solution, because every public body has the same problem. And I believe it was the library district that brought it to us the first, and everybody that has property within the city of Los Angeles Beach that's a public entity are going to be requesting our police officers to enforce, and so we need to make sure that we're on the same page. I asked Stephanie Hadley to speak a little bit about how we got to here, and you can take that and give it, and I think you can do that, Ms. Hadley.
Thank you, Mayor Kaufman. Are you okay? Great. So some initial conversations started to occur earlier this year amongst a core group of folks. Just a little bit of background of myself, I'm a regional housing coordinator, and I stepped into this position last time about this year. And so we've been talking to a lot of people in the community where this topic and the information first came on my radar was in a conversation with Chief Jordan White, and I believe Jordan is going to touch on that a little bit, so I don't want to steal his thunder. But from the conversation with Jordan and the need for solutions in this space, we ended up pulling together some folks to have an initial conversation that involved Mayor Kaufman, Jerry O'Sullivan from Adapt, Beth Barker-Adalgo from Gray Homeless Coalition, as well as Sam Engel from All Care. And we started to throw around some ideas for solutions of where we could start to help the homeless and start to provide a handout, a different space for them. With that being said, there are folks in our region that have stepped in to support this project. I know that there are script dollars that would be allocated with the $60,000 budget that goes toward this project in hopes to get it off the ground. What that money will be allocated for is to be determined based on the needs, the site, and solutions that we can come to and what that looks like. We also have submitted a letter of interest to the Judith and Morgan Foundation for support of this project, and we have been invited to submit a grant application that will be due at the end of this month. All contingent, all of these funds are contingent upon this meeting with brainstorm session and what comes out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to ask Chief White if he would basically explain what you explained at the last meeting, unless you have something better to say.
Well, I will take responsibility for you all being here, and with that, I appreciate you taking times out of your life and time away from your families to address this topic. And I wish I didn't need to make this a community project, but it truly is, and many folks in the community have asked why the police department hasn't solved the problem already. Can't we just move these folks along? And I empathize with each and every one of those people. I am not a humanitarian. I do humanitarian things, and I'm proud of our police department because our police officers do humanitarian things that they're not trained or expected to do, but they're the only person to do it. And as we've adapted and grown with laws in the state of Oregon and in the Ninth Circuit Court, we've realized that we need this to be a community solution. We can't quietly solve this problem out of sight, out of mind, and make it go away. And in order to do this right, it's going to require a full commitment of the community working together so we can all, one, stand behind the decision that was made, be proud of the outcome, and shoulder the burden, because we all are going to own it. And I'm a work-to-eat kind of guy. It's how I was grown, I was raised, I grew up doing that, and those of you who know me well know that when I'm not at work, I'm not getting called out, I'm at home framing houses, because I want people to have a reason to come here, live, contribute to our community, and grow Gold Beach. So I'm not the person that just is looking to provide handouts. And I know a lot of our conservative folks in this community struggle to make it the way that they're currently living, on the means that they currently have, whether they're retired or they're working a service industry job, and they say, "Why do we have to pay for somebody who doesn't want to work to have a place to live and food?" I understand that. But what it's come down to, and the reason that we're here tonight, is the fact we must have options. If we tell people where they can't be, we have to give them a place where they can be. And so far, our solution has been, we tell a lot of people what they can't do, and when they say, "What can you do?", our answer is, "You can leave town." Because other communities are working to solve your problem, not us. Which is fine if they listen, but what we're seeing, more and more folks, is they're here, they're here because our transient population tends to have alcohol and marijuana use. If they go to an area that is larger, they tend to run into a younger crowd of transients who are dealing with methamphetamine, fentanyl, and heroin abuse, and they don't want to deal with the victimization, the crimes, and the problems that are associated with that realm of drug use. Measure 110 and the problems that law enforcement's facing from a drug perspective are a whole another topic. We've done a few things in the community, and that wasn't passed down from Salem. The citizens of Curry County voted in for that measure 110 to be enacted. Perhaps they didn't know what the cost was or what we were doing when we did that, but we own that as a community. So when we embark on this path, we do have a place of partnering with humanitarians and organizations that make it their life work to help people move forward in their lives. But from a police perspective, we know that folks aren't moving out of being stuck, because we can't help them create a compelling future, especially for the rainy months of the year when they're just merely trying to survive, and they don't want to take our great advice to leave town. So meeting the statutory requirements so we can create ordinances and guidance to protect the values that we possess in this community and maintain the standard of living that we all chose to come here and enjoy, means we're going to have to make some accommodations as long as the laws say what the laws say. And right now, you know, we have some protection for police officers, but when we don't have any guidance at all, and until recently, we didn't even have a lot of legal guidance from folks weighing in on this, law enforcement's not going to go out of their way, because our liability protection is only based on us not knowingly violating somebody's rights. And what we've been told clearly is that we must not criminalize homelessness, and we must not impose unreasonable and unfair penalties or violate their rights based on homelessness. So that makes it a real gray area for us. So even though we do have a lot of protections when we enforce laws that may be found later to be unconstitutional, as long as we're acting in good faith, but they've made it real clear now for police officers to know that we cannot tell homeless people what they can and can't do without guidance that we're talking about tonight in place. So I hope that sets the stage and helps you understand why every person in this room and tuning in is a critical component of helping us as a community develop guidance.
Thank you, sir. So if you all read part of the packet or any of the packet, then you're up to date that we have to deal with constitutional rights, and obviously, we can't trump the Constitution, and we have state law, and we have case law precedent. So the issue, we can't just take people out of the county anymore and drop them off. It doesn't, it's not legal. So we have to come up with another solution. We traditionally do a round robin in our city council meetings, and so I'd like to do that tonight. Would one of the councilors want to go first? Would you like to start with the audience?
No.
No, I'll go first.
Councilor Martinez, you get to go first, and then we'll go around to Skinner and McGilvery, Madison, and Bradley, and then we'll go to our panelists.
Okay. We received some suggestions from other cities, larger cities, that of set up a designated area, and they either created small structures for their homeless population, or at least, I guess, allowed a space with a good camp, I suppose. I mean, I don't know how much land the city has or where, where we could possibly set up something like that, but that just seems like a, that is one possible solution, to where we designate city land or an area where we say, "You're allowed to camp here," or if we go so far as to build a few small structures, I don't know what they would look like, they would obviously be fairly crude, but they'll at least be something to protect from the harsh elements of the mountains. And I also wanted to touch on one thing that is part of this. One thing I suppose that we could also work on that would benefit everyone in the community is to, I guess, take a look at what kind of public utilities we have and how to improve them already. I know that's a bit off, but it does tie in a little bit when it comes to, let's say, bathroom facilities or what have you. I would like a conversation, if it's relevant enough, to address some of the, excuse me, let's call it infrastructure that we already have in place that perhaps could be enhanced. We have public bathrooms available that perhaps could be enhanced, perhaps add a shower system, some sort of comprehensive bathroom facility that is available to all. So I think that is a part of this that I think has some room, or at least has a voice to share within all of this, is that when we build something, we obviously are considering everyone in the city, and so we're also considering our already existing public spaces. Please excuse me, if I'm not making this as clear as I'd like it, but that's all I wanted to bring up, just to get the ball rolling, is that that has clearly been a part of the solution for some of the cities, that designate a land, a piece of land for temporary structures or semi-permanent structures. And then I would also like to add to the mix, that we would be serving everyone in our community by doing our best to maintain and perhaps upgrade already existing public utilities. Thank you. I'm sure I'll have more later.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Skinner?
I've been thinking about this issue for a really, really long time, front of people that I know personally who've experienced homelessness, houselessness.
Hello.
Thank you. To...
Try to look that way. We have a person that remembers.
So thinking about this issue a lot for a long time, based on people that I know and that I've had relationships with. I've been teaching for 20 years, so it's a special piece about behalf of kids, and the idea of what homeless looks like. We have a lot of different kinds of homeless. So in Fort Worth, our statistics are 35% of our students are, I just resigned my teaching position in Fort Worth, and 35% of the students in Fort Worth are legally homeless. They might be sharing an apartment or a house with other families, they might be living in a motel, they might be living in an RV, or I had in Oak Beach, a family of like eight living in a tent above one of the campgrounds. So homelessness looks a lot different. I think what we've been focusing on a lot in this meeting and for this facility is looking at not a family homelessness situation, it tends to be, I think, more single people or couples that we see out and about in town. So that's just something to think about, is what part of the population are we looking at? And then as far as Martinez's comment on expanding services we have, for those students who are homeless, I know that Driftwood and Pacific up in North County offer school services for laundry and showers to those students. I believe at the county buildings, there are showers already provided, maybe? There's not anymore?
Not now.
Not now? Okay. But that had been done in the past?
It was.
Okay. The other thing I was really just pleased to hear was the sense of community collaboration, and that's the only way that we can start addressing, I can't even use the word "following", but addressing the issue. I also was thinking, after I was reading this morning, an article, it was an article in the New York Times this morning about it, about houselessness in the country and how complicated it is and how many factors there are to it. But I had said the living in hotels earlier for families and kids. We've had teachers living in hotels and living in RVs in all three cities, in Curry County, so they too are technically homeless. So like looking at this population of housing, and I know as a council, I'm super proud of the work that we are doing on housing, Chief White, the work that you as an individual are doing on housing, that's just going to be critical to make sure we're maintaining that and that we are having a multifaceted approach to the problem. And then the last thing that I will share, and this happened when I was living in Portland, I was teaching in Beaverton during the housing crisis, and we have families who were middle-class families who were suddenly homeless, like moms trying to find out where to sleep in a park for comfort, for shelter. And I think this idea in this article, I forget the author this morning, he was talking about it, is musical chairs. When our housing is so limited and everybody's going, if you have something that keeps you from getting to the chair fast enough, you're going to lose out. And as the number of chairs shrinks, more and more people are, more and more people are missing out on having a safe place to be. And I think that blend of all of us in the community, in schools, law enforcement, government, all of you who are here today, I think that's going to be the most, most important thing that people do. And I would love to bring in more voices of people who are experiencing houselessness as well, as they are able to contribute.
Councilor McGilvery, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Skinner, for bringing to our attention the families in our area who are suffering from homelessness. It seems to me that we have two separate, at least two separate populations of people who are without homes, and some of them are the ones that are probably more obvious to us all. And regardless of intent, I don't think that there is a desire simply to not bother to work when somebody else will provide for you. I think that those people have some very serious already emotional issues and mental issues. So we're missing the whole gamut of mental health, emotional health, for a group of people who really don't necessarily want permanent housing, unlike our families who are suffering. They do need shelter. We're missing the component we used to have, and now for some reason are unable to have what we call warming houses, or warming shelters. And they were in two locations in Gold Beach. Those are gone. There's no place to go when it rains. There used to be a place where you could go and stay warm at night. Yeah, you had to leave by seven in the morning, but at least you weren't standing out in the rain or sleeping in the doorway. Now we have two problems. We have those who are without housing, and they're trying to protect their children and their families, and we have those who are without housing for whatever, they're on their own, or they're just in couples, and for whatever emotional or mental health issue may be going on with them, they are without housing. It seems to me we need to address both issues, and certainly the issue of sheltered housing for families. So our children, our couch surfing is highly important. We need to find sheltered housing for those people. If we have to build it, we have to build it, but something has to happen. Over the last three years, amazing things have happened in our family life, in our society, that has left people who normally had homes, jobs, someplace for their kids to go to school, all of a sudden found themselves, "Now what do I do?" And they're the ones, like you say, a mother finding, trying to find some shelter in a park for children. It's a whole, we have two things we have to deal with. One of them is getting those warming shelters back, and the other one is finding some housing. Whether we can find apartments somewhere, or like a motel or hotel where people can stay for short periods, because we have this group of homeless who do not want to settle here for the rest of their lives, they're just in transit, they need someplace to be too. Unfortunately, you have the whole infrastructure. You've got mental health, you've got social services, you've got medical issues, you've got policing issues, you know, it's huge. And we're a small community without quite that many people. Imagine if we were having to deal with this in the big city. And here we are, struggling with not a great deal, not a great many of our population. We've got some work to do, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Councilor Madison?
The script, the script opportunity of $30,000, $60,000 annually, is that renewable?
Do you know if that's renewable?
Stephanie, do you know? Is it renewable?
There are year-two funding.
A year or two?
There's year-one funding that's already been distributed, year-two funding, it's what that round is coming up and kind of a fall.
So we'd be eligible basically for $60,000 in hopes that there might be something coming sooner? $60,000 doesn't give us much these days, so that would have to be spent wisely. In the interim, looking for a long-term funding solution, as we know, has not been easy at any level. I think we really do need to remain solution-focused, and although this appears to be a temporary solution, it's not a long-term, a long-term plan in my opinion. I don't know that we're helping these people if we're just going to shove them onto a lot and say, "You can hang out here if you want." It's not really helping, it's just kind of avoiding, in my opinion. And like Councilor McGilvery had mentioned, there's different reasons why people are experiencing homelessness, and it's going to continue to grow and grow with the economy, the adversity, there are so many facets out of our control that we cannot rely on. And so we do have to bring those solutions locally. What does that look like and what are we capable of? I don't want to be in a position where we're providing a lot and don't have the funding in a year and a half and say, "We're sorry, you've got to move on," and then we're back to square one again. So many of the issues that we're having is we don't have a collaborative, non-profit or non-governmental organization of relationship, in my opinion, that's pulling together instead of saying, "Well, we're going to do all of this, and you guys can go do that over there, and, oh, well, there's some money here, so I think I'm going to start a nonprofit." If you look at the model like Kahootz, that is an extremely successful and encompassing program that addresses housing issues, crisis counseling, it's law enforcement support. In fact, they're so successful right now that their budget is $789,000 annually. They received funding of ARP funds from Wyden. In fact, he was so moved by the success of the program that he brought it to the setting and said, "Let's onboard this, do some research, and you'll see, it's successful." And so we don't have the resources required to serve full scope that is really needed for these folks. You know, we don't have sustainable mental health. I have two therapists, and none of them live here. They're not, they're all out of state. You know, there's grief and loss counseling, substance abuse, we don't have state hospital availability like we used two years ago. And so these are really the things that we need to advocate for, because we could put somebody on a lot, but they're not going to get the help they need. They're still going to need to address those systemic issues that continue to keep them on the street. I also feel like there should be emphasis on those folks that don't have the ability to provide for themselves. You know, you have children, like you said, I can't tell you how many, I can't tell you how many kids I've housed at my house, because there was no way I was going to let them couch surf. You know, and there are so many seniors that are struggling, that are looking at the price of food right now, and they're saying, "Well, I'm going to have to buy a can of two-for-a-dollar peas, and I can't stand them, but it's either that or I'm not paying my lot rent, because I need to pay the utilities that one of us bought." So it's not just, it's not just one solution, right? We've got to categorize those and look at those from a general perspective, and make sure that we're focusing on solutions that provide long-term support. And I'm not sure that we can support this long-term at this point, but I think it's great that we're having this conversation, and maybe this empowers us all to vote together more collaboratively and have that conversation the city can't do by itself, nor can the county, nor can any of our special districts. Let's see. I'm done.
Okay. Councilor Bradley?
I don't need to worry, as long as everyone else. I do know, I do agree with Councilor Madison, that our mental health availability, I do have some concerns with, I've left the field of oak tree because the system was broken from the state down, and just looking at outside, I haven't seen it be fixed. at outside, I haven't seen it be fixed. But also, I've been intrigued by John Huntsman, is in 2005, he took the philosophy of housing first on a 10-year program. And it seemed like it was fairly successful when you look at the results, it didn't solve everything. And I think that's one of the things we, we probably need to remember as a group is that we'll never completely solve homelessness. But I do think we need to try to help those who can. I do know that there's some people that no matter what you do, they're not going to be in a home. I grew up, one of them, he grew up in a homeless. So they tried to put him into an apartment and it lasted about two weeks, even though everything was paid for because he just couldn't stand being in the walls. So we're not solving completely, but I think we need to do what we can.
Thank you, sir. Okay. It's amazing, every issue you guys have had, there's somebody here that can address that. Did you want to follow up?
I have one thing I forgot to say. When we're talking about serving our community or representing our community in the homeless population, those without housing, we also have, what you just said, Counselor Bradley, we have residents who are homeless and we have visitors or people who are traveling through who are homeless. And so I think that puts a lot of responsibility on, I feel as a counselor, on me, because those are people that live in Gold Beach. They just don't live in a house or an apartment or trade. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Mr. Farmer, if you can hear me, I'm promoting you to panelists, so you have to put a yes on your thing, that way I can bring you in in a little bit. So for those of you that don't know who's on line, we have Drew Farmer from Orca and we have Jerry O'Sullivan from Adapt, which is our Addictions and Mental Health. We have the Women's Homeless Coalition, we have Oasis Shelter here, we have Brookings Core Response here. I can't remember what organization you're from.
Mary Enterprises.
Thank you, Mary Enterprises here. So we do have a lot of the social nonprofit services that are going to help put this together in the room. Everybody may not have known that. I'm, I'm really humbled that one invited, everybody shut up. So that's good. So this, this was noticed as a workshop to work with the other entities that are public and are in our city limits. So we have the Library District and the County here. So I'll give you a couple of minutes to just, if you want to say something, you don't have to. And then I'm going to go to a couple of the proposed solutions and let the people that graciously give us some of their Friday night, explain what they get. We'll start with the Library, which I think is Mr. Schomond and Mr. Skinner.
Do you want me to go?
Well, I mean, I have a couple of things to say.
First of all, I just wanted to thank the city for the services that they do provide that allow the Special District, the Library District to operate effectively. And I guess I wanted to point out that law enforcement is extremely supportive, but I also acknowledge just how stretched they are and we, I don't know, Police Chief White, how often do you guys get called by us? I personally think I've probably called once since you've been chief. We really try to avoid that, we try to make sure our staff are trained so that they can address anything that's non-emergency. That being said, part of the reason why we reached out is that with the laws the way they are, we need to give a response to some of our clientele, we need to, to give them direction, we need to give them guidance. And I don't think it's effective for us to do that unless it's in alignment with, with what the city is, is doing. Because otherwise, I think it's going to result in us having to call more often. And again, our goal really is to, to, to not make any of these things police issues. So that's kind of why we reached out to talk. We really, I mean, we have consulted with the Special District's Association of Oregon Legal Counsel about what our responsibilities are. They're a little bit different, they're definitely not as onerous or restrictive as what the city is under. But our property is also in a place in a residential neighborhood that does not have patrols after a certain amount of time. And so I guess what I would ask is regardless of whether or not council feels they're able to put out a comprehensive plan that they can trust is going to be in place and funded 10 years from now, in the short term for just sheer functionality for, for the, for the law enforcement, for those of us that are trying to respond to the people that we see and to make our neighborhoods safe, there needs to be something that we can say to be in compliance with the law. And, and so anything that, that we, I don't have a whole lot more to say tonight, but I do believe that myself, our staff and our board are, are willing to, at some point when, when the city feels like it has a more, a more complete vision of what they'd like to do, if there's anything that we can do to be a part of that, I'm sure we're, we're interested in discussing that.
I think, you know, time is kind of a big issue here. We've got like less than a year to come to compliance with this law. And it's a lot to, you know, we're just kind of picking a handle with this whole picture is. And I kind of see it more as, oh, start basic, start low tech. Of course, money's an issue, you know, we're not going to have a bunch of money right off the bat to deal with the kind of things we have to do. So I'm thinking there's people sleeping in Gold Beach right now on the streets, there's people sleeping all over. It's already happened. And, oh, the problem becomes when someone's sleeping where you don't want them to sleep, other people will go somewhere where you can't see them and it's a big deal. So we've basically got to take the people who are sleeping in a place where you don't want them to be and say, "Oh, you could go over here and there's a roof and a porta body." You know, that is a starting point. You have a basic humane, something out of the range. And then from that point, people that want to, you know, better themselves, people that want to get out of the situation, you start hooking them up with the services. But we have to start at a very baseline thing if we're going to do any kind of compliance within, you know, 365 days. So I just don't think we need to complicate it too much at the beginning. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Voish, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor, doing fine for now?
All right, thank you. All right, so I'm trying to remember who's on here. Let me give my opinion. So I think that we're going to have a better solution in about five years based on the fact that the city has been working long-term on solving the housing problem from the zoning part. We've also got ARPA funds that we're using mostly towards housing as well. We've hired a staff member, Mr. Magano, to help us with the ADO program, also to be our assistant planner, and he is our main contact to cap, become a catalyst to get people to build. And we're, it's working. In addition, I've been having conversations with a property owner to build a subsidized housing project. And if we can accomplish that, those projects always take two to five years, two on the very short end. So that, you know, I'm thinking at five years at the most and we're hoping that we can get that done. The subsidized housing piece, we just don't have enough subsidized housing here and vouchers don't work here because everybody's rent's too high, if they even have a vacancy. So the other solution that I know is being worked on and Mary had, I don't know how to say your last name, Lukey Stallman? Is working with Brookings Core Response is working on a project turnkey program in Brookings and the Homeless Coalition is working on a project turnkey program hopefully in Gold Beach. And so those are more transitional and once they're done, they will accept vouchers, I believe is the goal. So a combination of those is going to give us that piece that Counselor Madison was worried about is, you know, you can't just put people on a campground and there's nowhere to go. In addition, Adapt just already started to do a pretty good job on the ground with the mental health services and the drug and alcohol services that we've not had in the past. Let me just say recent future, recent past. That's not too negative, right? Okay, and then Mr. Farmer is the director for Oregon Coast Community Action, I believe he has something to offer as well. So do we want to start with you guys or should we start with, with Mr. O'Sullivan? Mr. O'Sullivan, would you mind talking about what your organization might be willing to do? How good you're able to unmute.
So far, technology hasn't strung me too much tonight, so, thank you, Mayor Kaufman. So Adapt, we're new to the community, we've been around over 51 years and we are substitute treatment programs initially in our beginning. We have developed other resources over the years where now we do full community mental health programs, we have subsidies, we have health clothing solo that's probably not going to be the case in Perry County in the short term. But we are working on some issues around outreach and housing, which I think will, will help quite a bit of what we're talking about here tonight. Recently, the State of Oregon has approved what are called BURN grants, maybe for health resource network grants. We're a recipient of that, Brookings Core Response is a recipient of that also for the two organizations in Perry County that are performing the BURN for Perry County. And a big part of that is having staff to go out here with absolute experience to do outreach to people who are in need of service, deceased, could be unhoused or they could be people who are in crisis and help connect them to service. It's meant to be not just about the SUD, substance use disorder services, mental health services, it could be really any service that helps them improve their health. The idea is to really create a connection for people who aren't as connected and maybe don't know or, or don't have the skills to get service. I think it will make a big difference, it's going to take a little bit of time for us to get that up and running, it's just been approved and, and the money will be coming down over the next month or so and then we're in the process of recruiting for those positions. In addition to that, we're working on other grants to help provide some additional housing. We currently have a hamlet house, which is housing in Gold Beach, if you know, if you're familiar with it, two-building property or one building burned down a few years ago. And we are planning on having that building rebuilt, hopefully in the next year, we have financial resources in place now in Perry. And in addition to that, we'll have another project in Perry County, this being Gold Beach or Brookings, we're not sure yet, depends on property availability, but we're hoping to bring another 12 units online over the next year and a half or so, I think fifteen years, but as soon as we can get that. Staffing level-wise for our mental health program, our current level is about 22 staff and our original target, when we first took it over, was 20 staff, based on information we received from previous providers. And we have decided that's not enough, so we have been restricting to 30 up until about two months ago. I think over the next month, we're going to be shooting more like 40. So we are, can see an increase in mental health and SUD staff over the next few months. Recruiting is difficult, but we are making some progress. All of this helps build resources, some of that will be office-based services, but those services that are outside the four walls, I think everybody can make a biggest difference with helping people start to make change in their lives, especially those in the doctor class tonight, maybe in that. I think that's, that's what I have to say. Any questions?
My question for you is, because I already know the answer, is we talked about possibly if Gold Beach were to partner with somebody to do an urban campground or something like Coldwell Village, would you be willing to be one of the partners in making that happen?
Yeah, and of course the term partner, I think our primary role would be to support those, those residents with services, help connect them and kind of be a regular attendee there onsite, that, that's part of that outreach work, but like, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Farmer, would you like to speak now?
Sure.
Sure.
Did I get it?
Hold on one second, Mr. Farmer. Mr. O'Sullivan, Counselor Skinner asked a question for you.
Mike's here.
Mike's in here.
I'm just going to look at you, I'll talk here. So you had said that Adapt is half a century old. Are there Adapt offices or programs currently doing this kind of work of other, in other rural small towns?
Yeah, we're in the four county region, we started in Duckliss County, we're in Josephine, we're in Coos, in North Perry. We have housing projects in all four counties that are a little bit different for each of those. We have peers that work in our program, we have our mental health programs in Duckliss County in particular, we have ACT programs which are supporting the, those with severe persistent mental illness and they actually go out in the community, a multidisciplinary team, help support them, provide housing, work with them in their housing and then continue to help them be successful. So there's lots of different ways that we do this work. And I find it interesting, somebody mentioned the Coos model. We've worked for years to get ourselves, point where our crisis team in Duckliss County is really evaluating that, that Coos model and we're hoping that with one more grant next year or in this year, that we'll be able to implement that full Coos model in Duckliss County. It's taken us about five years to get there, but our plan in Perry County is to kind of walk that same path and get to the point where we have that full Coos model, as much as we can do and, and invoke them.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Farmer, you're on. Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, does this work?
That works, I stopped you and started you, sorry.
Oh, excellent, I've never done this from my phone. So Oregon Coast Community Action, you folks probably already know what we do, we could assist with the aspects of development, I'm able to provide a little technical assistance just as myself, I'm on the city council in Coos Bay where we did collaborate through a homelessness work group on the Coldak Village project. So I've got firsthand experience with that. The system of work at large, though, could be helpful in that transitional phase as people are moving out of shelter towards that permanent housing. We're able to provide landlord engagement, energy assistance vouchers as they come from the state, rental assistance vouchers as the money comes from the state. We've been working on service and the other programs. So that would enable us to go to the site and assist the residents of a warm and center or in a temporary shelter or a transitional shelter in connecting with the next tier of resources they need to continue with that handout until they're on their own few weekends. We also, being a larger agency, a larger nonprofit, have some ability to go after larger grants that come with greater fiscal oversight due to the volume that we're able to contain. So we, we would be able to partner in terms of that as well. And the agency, Orca, I recognize it has not historically done as much in Perry as it can, so that's a recommitment that I've been trying to take the agency down since I started, so. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great. Now we will go to the Homeless Coalition, would you like to start, Ms. Mark Realdogg? Did I get that right?
Yeah. First I want to say thank you to everyone in the room, thank you for your
Gymnasium Voice.
Leadership, thank you very much for having this workshop. We appreciate the space and time to have this conversation. I want to address a couple of the concerns that I heard from counselors. We, and I'd like to let folks know that for eight months, from September of 2021 through March 31st of 2022, in partnership and collaboration with Brookings Core Response, St. Timothy's, and Brookings Harbor Community Helpers, we did effectively run a shelter in Brookings at the Pacific Sunset Inn. We were providing isolation and quarantine for people, homeless people with a test of positive for COVID to try to mitigate the spread in the community. And then we operated winter warming through a subrecipient agreement with ORCA from November to March 31st in conjunction with the isolation quarantine. We also tapped resources at the state level, Oregon Department of Human Services, to take advantage of hospital decompression, which is a resource that is only available during emergency disaster declarations. Hospital decompression is designed to keep people out of our EDs, out of the hospital, people that are medically fragile on the way. So we also hosted those guests in that shelter for eight months. There's not one organization, nonprofit, that's serving the homeless right now that can do this work alone. But collaboratively, we have worked together to build a network of resources, albeit what it is, to support up to fifteen to twenty households every time during that eight-month period. And I'm proud to say, and I think that if we were to look at the EMS calls during that period of time, we probably saw a reduction in hospital EMS calls during that eight-month period because many of the folks that we had in there, over sixty, sixty-five, truly medically fragile. If they're in a tent or unsheltered, we're going to end up cycling in and out of our EDs. And so we call those few frequent users systemic engagement. We want to reduce those numbers. So that's one point. We have been building a collaborative network within Curry County to be able to pool at each other's resources and expertise and skill sets to address the issues that many of the households we serve have. And they are various, for sure. The Curry Homeless Coalition has restricted funds of $100,000 set aside to support a project like this. $60,000 of it is the share initiative grant that we received from Advanced Health. And if that money is diluted and we spend down, we are going to be eligible for year two, year two of the share initiative grant. Tammy, Mayor Kaufman, sorry, mentioned the project turnkey application. We have recently found out of a property in Gold Beach that's been traditionally selling. And our focus for that project would be, some of you may remember that ORCA supported what was called FAST house in Curry County for Gold Beach for a couple of years. The purpose of the housing was to help with families that are kids that are in foster care, by our parents, they've jumped through every hoax, their safety plan, they've done everything that they need to do, but they lack housing, so they cannot get their kids back. So our project turnkey application would focus on family reunification, medically fragile seniors for this project. The property is fifty units and we hope to renovate down to twenty to twenty-five studios, one and two bedrooms. And they would be used as transitional housing, kind of a transitional housing model. So there's also continuum of care funding on the table right now. The announcement came from the height of June. Closing date is October. There's a lot of money on the table right now to support operations and capital for projects such as this. When we do all work together and pull our resources together, and with our BURN, Jerry O'Sullivan mentioned the BURN, the Behavioral Health Research Network that has been running, we will have much more resources to do more than what you guys see us doing right now, which is providing food, nutrition, hydration, basic human needs, and applications for housing, subsite housing units that simply are not adequate for the demand right now. We've lost too many long-term rentals in our market. And so we've got to, I love that Mayor Kaufman has this vision of five years. Let's provide this project here to just get a gap, you know, to where we actually have enough adequate inventory of long-term rental units in our community. And the last thing I would suggest, that if you haven't heard of the model of Built for Zero, that you look at Built for Zero. And I think collectively, if we were to take that approach in Curry County, it is basically, it's designed to create a system where homelessness is brief and infrequent versus frequent and long-term for our community. And thank you once again for hosting this workshop.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
What do you want to talk? I can talk, but I don't know.
Well, do you understand me?
Yes.
I can barely understand you.
If you talk, I'll be all right. Oasis in Gold Beach, we're working on the project.
Oasis, we're working on the project turnkey application. Oh, sorry, Flower?
Gymnasia Voice.
Okay, I'll work on that. So we're working on the project turnkey application together. And do you want me to share on it? So we, the deadline to submit that is July 22nd, correct? So Oasis is taking the lead on the project turnkey. And we have agreed to partner with them. Actually, we asked them originally, but we agreed to partner with them and help provide some supportive services. They have advocates, so they do more work on the domestic violence side of that. And we do more work with a lot of the homeless population in Brookings. And so we've agreed to come together and purchase a motel. Oasis would hold the application and the property. And we would provide onsite case management alongside their advocates. And those units would be roughly half allocated to domestic violence survivors and half allocated to us for us to be able to put people in there that are unsheltered. And there would be really strict requirements on those entries. Probably a lot more strict on the domestic violence side than on our side. But we also have a lot of criteria that we'll be putting in place so that we're really capturing the most vulnerable community members that we have. Because there are a lot of people who are in need of shelter, but we can't serve everybody at first. So we've talked a lot about, sorry, we talked a lot about this last night. So I'm trying to bring a lot of it back and forward. We've identified a property down there, a motel. There might be, we may be changing the location, you know?
Yeah, why not?
So we might be changing the location. There were some concerns brought up and safety concerns and other things brought up last night that we've thought about. And so there are potentially a couple of locations. And we would have fencing around the location. We would have onsite staff twenty-four hours. We'd have security services would be provided offsite, except for those that are specifically for the residents. Intakes would be done offsite. We would provide space. Obviously, we would be doing our intakes. Everyone that is, that would like to come into the program would have to submit an application. And that would go through Mary Pat and myself. And then we would.
I also want to add that with those dialers, to send those safety for survivors, that was a big thing that people talked about. And we require people to go through our emergency shelter first and then there for at least three months. And while they're in the emergency shelter, they're working on getting jobs, they're working on the protective order there. They make the decision whether they go to that traditional location or not. This is not something we force on them, but it's an option. And right now, we have no option for anybody with this location. We've been able to, we believe that with the signing of the unit and it's selfless first, not to share with other populations that are in this situation. So that's where Brookings co-works, because they have the experience in Brookings. We're from Gold Beach. We're here. We work with you. We know your community, but we don't know Brookings. So that's where we see more jobs in Brookings. We see more resources in Brookings than here. So we want to give survivors the option of being able to go to Brookings if they want. And something that we simply don't know is we also have a transitionary housing unit here in Gold Beach. And that's not something that we just works right here. But that, like, we were working with different locations, working at scattered locations where we could give them an autopsy option. Whereas we're setting up a location in poor apartment too, so that if someone in poor apartment wants to go back to poor apartment, they can do that. But transitionary housing is not an emergency shelter. It's not a division for someone in, they have to go through a program, have one for your other, and they have to work with each person. And figure out, is this a good location for you? Are you a safe person to add to the program or not? So there are a lot of groups that they have to jump in to get into their location. But that's something that, and they didn't put a big goal to understand. And that's something that a lot of people do not understand. We don't just put people in transition, they choose to go there.
So I think some of the, some of the things that got lost in translation last night were that this is not somewhere that people will be directly placed into that are experiencing, you know, domestic violence crisis. They won't be in crisis by the time they get there. So there were a lot of safety concerns expressed last night regarding people who were fleeing from partners and possible violence at the motels and things like that. And these are all things that they would already be transitioning out into the general population anyway from the shelter. And so this is just another opportunity. So they're already going to be out there somewhere. And oftentimes, when they come out, I imagine, since we work with, we work with a lot of populations, it kind of crosses over a lot, so that's why this makes sense. And so I do know that often, sometimes when a person gets out of the shelter and they don't have another option, they end up going where people know where they are anyway. And so it's still not safe. So having another location, I think, is what we're really talking about in that transition time. So it's not short, it's not short stay like a shelter would be. So that was kind of some of the stuff that I think people didn't catch last night. Trying to think if there was something else that maybe was brought up. What else was brought up last night? What other issues were brought up last night?
Okay, we're really focused on that shelter for what we're saying. And Councilor Madison did have a question.
Thank you. So when you say you're looking to serve the most vulnerable community members, what does that mean to you? What is the definition of that?
So for us, most vulnerable population means that we're serving people who are.
But they might have.
Right, so for us, since we're community health workers, we're traditional health workers, we work a lot with the medical system and navigating that. So these are usually people that have high medical needs. Currently, I explained this last night, we do have two veterans and one person that's not a veteran. And all three of those have dementia. They're all over the age of seventy or eighty and are medically fragile. And they're currently sleeping on the streets in Brookings. And so we would be able to place, actually, we are using a motel, the motel that we have identified as the, probably one of the best locations. We're currently using that to shelter one of them right now. And that's, so it would be just like that. We would be putting them in there, only if we, if there was ownership of the motel, we would be able to have twenty-four seven staff. We would be able to bring medical pieces in that we can't do on the street.
So that motel is downtown Brookings?
Yes.
And it's going to be fenced on 101?
Yes, fully fenced. It will be really more of a, like a gated community. So that's why services, we're not bringing in, you know, DHS and all these other services and having like a resource fair there or anything. It really is a gated community. And if people are coming in, they either live there or they have a specific purpose to be there to serve someone, like if they're a caregiver for someone that is under hospital decompression or hospice or something like that. So we're talking about partnering with hospice, the hospital, and being able to provide that alternative to backing up the hospital.
So you feel a facility on 101 is the best place for that service? Or is it the inconvenience of having the access to a motel?
Probably both. Certainly, the motels in Brookings that we've looked at are already kind of not in good shape. And so we're willing to undertake that and fix them up and make them look better and put all the security measures in place. We're not intentionally choosing one on 101, but those are the ones available to us. And it does create a better transportation system, for sure, if the bus route is able to go along there. So it does have some benefits being along the 101.
So that would, that would put that hotel out of the business of collecting TLT dollars for the city, right?
Correct.
Have you considered maybe speaking with the city and in turn, that would ultimately be something we'd be looking at in a little community? There have been TLT dollars approved for use with housing. Have you pursued or had that conversation? To maybe instead of taking from the hotels, but maybe supplementing those facilities located elsewhere with TLT dollars?
Yeah, so this motel in particular is, while it does bring in tax money, it is very often, and has been for the last few years, used as long-term housing. We also, that was, it's kind of the chicken and the egg with that. So that was brought up last night that, well, if we do this, we're just going to have more housing bought and turned into short-term rental. And it's actually kind of the other way around. This is happening because we're losing units. So putting, I mean, this is not a Gold Beach issue. Brookings absolutely needs to put a cap or put some sort of regulation on that. But that's a whole separate issue, for sure. We've definitely talked with the city.
I was right. Thought when he came back, he was talking to me and I asked him a question about how many people stay at the motel right now? And he said, right now, he's giving away, we're supporting you.
Right.
To, up to probably maybe people right now. We're talking about housing that only be provided, providing the little services there. And we are adding the services. And so if motel for really high demand, he would have the rooms to provide completely, right? So we're talking about motel that barely run it down and receive as an opportunity to take a property that need TLC and turn it into something better.
I have one last question. So I know historically Oasis has had a no tolerance for drugs. Would that continue to be the case in order to carry someone's? I think that would be important. And here's what I'm thinking about that. Because ultimately, this will be an issue we deal with, you know, in six months or a year. But if you're putting a domestic violence victim with her children in the same building as a transient that's got mental health and substance abuse issues along with a veteran housed down the hall with PTSD, do you have the transitional empathetic professional experience, sustainable, consistent services already lined out to mitigate that?
Can you, okay. Can you repeat that last part, please?
First of all, we will, if we get the property, first of all, we don't have the property. So if we get the property, then the bottom line is we're drawing on the property. If you're caught and drawn out, it's purely, so that's the first thing. The second thing, you're asking me about venue. We have, the property is written to, we have a T, or it's like that. I know, it's one, whatever. If someone has a drug history, if God, we have, and they're going to Brookings, they'll be on the separate side. Then on, and then the survivor, it will be on one side. And people that go to, who are, will be on a different side. So yes, we have concussion and flame. And we will not be placing individuals who have similar life experiences next to Brookings.
Thank you, Mary Pat.
Go ahead. I don't want to get too far into the Brookings because we want to talk about Gold Beach.
An active question for our police chief.
Go ahead.
Chief White, do we have as a police department, a housing?
Chief White, do we have as a police department, housing, or hotel vouchers to give people in emergency? I knew Beaver's did, but Beaver's has a lot more.
We haven't asked, however, we have fewer options. Folks aren't receiving those vouchers here because we have occupancy issues. But it's not around the issue.
In the occupancy? Are we seeing any more?
No. And it's unfortunately, most of our churches and small businesses have gotten frustrated with the damage and the messes that get left behind. And so we have fewer cooperating businesses now.
Thank you.
Right. I think the issue with that is without the wraparound case services to teach people to actually put their garbage in their garbage can, you don't get the solution you want. Is that what you were gonna say?
That, and that, and then the issue is, occupancy issue is an issue right now in peak season. And we currently have a veteran who spent a night across the bridge because he couldn't find a room here. He's got money. He's trying to find a room, understand there isn't one. And he's, because he has health-related issues that can become problematic in motel rooms and getting into a facility, he's been DNR'd from many properties in South County. He's worn out his welcome in South County. We are working with DHS, APD to get this, these people placed, but we have to wait for the capacity. We have to wait for a bed to open, a room to open within the assisted living facilities.
Thank you. Council? I'll speak up. Are you ready to talk about whether or not you want to try to do an urban campground? Or do you want to continue this conversation? And then, because if we're moving in that direction, our time placement ordinance will be different than if we aren't moving in that kind of a direction. So we'll start with you, which is your first.
I would like to look at that. I think that we do, as Ms. Swanson said, need something in a year, and I think that's a good place to start. I think certainly it's a good short-term response while we deal with the long-term. But I don't think we should lose track of what our long-term goals have to be. We can't necessarily find a vacant lot and say, here you are, you can start your tent here. And then think we solved the problem because we have, we got it.
Ms. McIlroy?
Yeah, we got it.
Ms. McIlroy?
I agree with Ms. Gilbreath.
Ms. Bradley?
I do agree with Councilor Gilbreath and Councilor Madison. I think that first, we're going to some place where Chief White can be directed on him, hopefully further away from the problems to Greer has to deal with, people starting beach fires, so.
Councilor Martinez? The question is, do you want to move forward with an urban campground kind of idea? And then that makes a difference in how we just place kind of now?
I think that is a, yes, I would support that. Wouldn't be open to this anyway. There would be no qualifications to do it.
I think...
That question would be coming probably more towards the organization that would be hosting it. I think the city would be a partner, but our insurance company and our attorney is telling us not to be an owner of it, if that makes sense. So we can be a participant. We might be able to provide maybe a water and sewer hookup. Maybe we can, you know, if we have property, maybe that works, maybe we can provide that, but to not actually be the operational... For somebody who don't know, we own the property that the Oasis Shelter was on for ages. And just a couple of years ago, we heated it over to, we leased it to them for a dollar a year. That gave us no liability. So, Councilor Gilbreath?
A question. I understand that there is an ordinance within Gold Beach, the city of Gold Beach, about camping. The city, if we set up this tent city, we're in violation of our own ordinance. And then does that ordinance impact our warming shelters that we have added in the past by saying those warming shelters are campgrounds and effectively cannot be? Is that...
I don't think our camping ordinance is actually enforceable the way it's written right now. It's one of the things we have to adjust. But that's how UG started their program, is they changed their camping ordinance.
And I think I'm just wondering if we don't camp, do you say?
We do. You are correct.
May I?
Yes, Councilor Skinner.
To Councilor Martinez's question about the rules, wasn't there something in the packet for tonight?
There were some suggestions.
That said, not suggestions for rules, but said that if the city has a partnership, the city can help. Is that the rules with the other organization?
Correct.
Okay.
So I think, and I'm gonna lean on Stephanie Hadley, she's been my partner on this. I think the next step would be to authorize a group to work together to write up a presentation. Is that correct? And especially if the city can find some land.
That would be my suggestion. Yes, Mayor Hupman?
That would be your suggestion. Okay. And we do have in front of us a couple of properties that staff identified. And one of them we own on Fourth Street. There are some legal issues with it. It's not very large, but it would be for a small one. It's up on Fourth Street across from the hospital. Yes.
Isn't that just the daycare?
It's probably half a block. It's also within a thousand feet of the school, so there would be no sex offenders. Which is something I didn't mention, and thank you, Ms. Helvaldo Barker, for showing me this word. It's called justice free entry. We're gonna have a difference for people that like to hurt other people and end up in jail and come out back out or in prison. They're probably not gonna be housed with the population that is just coming out of the hospital and, you know, they still have a line, and they need to be careful. They're, they're, that's not gonna mix together. So we probably can't solve the justice free entry problem with this, but we can solve the more vulnerable population, hopefully. And I, I think you mentioned, Councilor Gilbreath, there's not a one, one fix-all.
No, there isn't.
The other property, we were just told, that's in the port, is in part of the airport expansion. So that one on the left side of the map won't work. Then, I think Mr. Wolf's left us. It's been observed that the parking lot the county has is not being used next to Mr. Johnson's apartment. So that would be a discussion with the county if we wanted to pursue that. It is larger than the city lot. And then there are some private lots that staff identified, but we didn't want to mention it in a public meeting without first talking to those individuals. Because we all felt like if somebody was talking about our property like that, that would be offending. So if you want to lead in, that's a conversation that the work group can start on. Any other questions?
A comment. On that lot the county owns, I would imagine that lot might be a consideration for the courthouse, jail redoing when that eventually happens. But with the idea that this is a short-term spot, that might be a great spot that we could use temporarily.
And there is a private landowner pretty close to that that we will not mention.
I didn't hear you say that?
There's a private landowner nearby that we will not mention that I think was originally your idea. So...
Yeah. And then also that space, what Mr. Johnson?
Johnson?
What Mr. Johnson's been doing in...
He's here.
... formally, thank you very much, to serve our community and the Christian Health Center and the food bank right there. I know Ms. Swanson has been doing a lot of care for people as well, providing resources across the Christian Health Center. That seems like a good space.
That location would be my first choice.
Okay.
With almost $100 million, I don't think the courthouse is gonna be a good one.
And it's by law enforcement. So in the paperwork tonight, it was talking about mediating citizen concerns. Safety is a big one and not my home. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Hadley?
Oh, Mr. Cutler. That location also, I'm thinking, the showers and stuff that are in the juvenile are right now, and if they could somehow use those.
Like at night when they're not there?
Yeah. Somehow area that portion off so they have access to showers, but I don't know.
I think Ms. Hadley's grant, she was gonna ask for a shower facility. Is that correct?
Correct. And I couldn't hear what that person was saying, but yes, the Judith Ann Mogan.
Oh, where the...
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. And where the shelter was, where Curie Juvenile is now, there are some showers. He was wondering if the showers could be used there, maybe like when they're not there. But...
That would be a fantastic option. A backup plan that we could have, that we've talked about, is potentially utilizing the Judith Ann Mogan grant for a shower trailer for the project.
That would be better? Okay. Everybody's saying that would be a better answer. Okay. So who wants to be on the work group to move this forward? You do? You do? Anybody? You do.
I think it's essential that we have.
Okay. So we have Chief White, Councilor McGilbreath, Councilor Skinner, Homeless Coalition.
How many positions do you have on that?
And Chief Greger.
Oh, okay. Did you say you wanted to go on here? Yeah, absolutely.
Great. I didn't give you a chance to talk, did you?
No, you didn't.
You're reading about...
Okay, I mentioned something about a building burning down. You know what that was? So a lot of people brought up a lot of different things tonight about different faces of homelessness. And that is good, because there are many different faces of the families, the kids, and even, you know, single men, single women, and kids. But unfortunately, what I end up dealing with in my job here on a more daily basis is primarily 25 to 55-year-old males with mental health issues, alcohol issues, PTSD issues, and sometimes they just have bad days. We do work with them quite a bit to try to build relationships with my, Chief White's crew does too. I will also tell you that some days it is extremely overwhelmingly frustrating, the response that we get from them when we're trying to help them, or even their other cohorts that are down in the beach or wherever they are. Couple of things that I would like to say about picking these locations, I think the one, this part from my perspective, if they go by the county, is great because it's got beach grass around it. All but one of our major fires, and I say major, anything over a quarter acre in Gold Beach since 2015, was transmigrated. The only one that was not, that was in excess of the quarter acre, was the Lyon House Fire. I think that was kids and fireworks. So obviously, educating our homeless slash transient population that we have on what is safe in our area based on the time of year is highly important. Putting this facility, if we have one, in a place that is safe year-round would be beneficial for everybody in the community. And then pulling that hat off really quick, I own two businesses in town. I have family in this town, and I have kids in this town that walk on the street. We rely on tourism in this town, and this town is living on tourism. We also need to protect our local people, their businesses, their livelihood, and the people that come here to take advantage of those and support the people that do live here. So I think it's also very important that, while we're trying to figure out where we're going to put this kind of a facility to help these people out, we also need to make sure that we have 2,600 someone people here in Gold Beach that rely on tourism and these people coming to our town. So from my perspective, I say I support all the other things with the other, other forms of homelessness we have, but this is the one that I do have to deal with on a more of a daily basis. And not as much as Chief White, but still probably four to five times a week. We have four fires, four nights in a row on the beach that had to be dealt with, and it's at 11:30 to 3:30 in the morning. I have to pull up my volunteers. We're all volunteers, by the way. I have to pull them out of bed and take them down there to deal with that. So that's, that is one thing that is very important to me from, from my position in the city, as well as my position as a business owner and a modern family owner in this town. So I would like to help on it. I think that there's lots to, it's almost an overwhelming amount. I didn't want to come in here tonight and just start casting my opinion because it would have been fairly negative because of my, my issues I've had in the past and the run-ins and, and those sort of things. But I have also created some fairly decent relationships with some of our persons in town now. I put a smoke detector in Oasis Saturday for them. So we do try to, we do try to build relationships, but I think it's better that I listen and get a few more sides of the story and opinions of things and educate us a little bit before I throw too much out there. But I do have some ideas and concerns, and I would like to be able to cross through this with the council.
Thank you. Hold on. Mr. Skinner?
I just have a question. And it, my question is about folks that are living in vehicles, whether they're passing through and in town for just one day or here for an extended period of time. Does this plan call for some place for that type of a situation? Because in my mind, part of, part of the issue on our property is for those folks, there's no running water. There's, you know, so I guess my, I'm hoping that whatever plan the city comes up with, there's, there's some component of it that we can direct folks that are in cars to a place.
That's a great idea. We need to address where car camping could be okay. Some places have new churches. Is that right? Yeah. Ms. Skinner?
Hi. Sorry. We spent too much time together. I had that same, same exact question right now. But my question was for Ms. Barker and Helvaldo. When we're bringing people to the table, is there a peer or somebody experiencing homelessness right now who might be able to serve on the team? Or somebody who's maybe in a transitional situation already? Or maybe from one of the other organizations? Or maybe from who's they? Who could give us that perspective? From the Coal Village or whoever's moved out of Coal Village? And they were giving statistics on this memo?
Yeah.
So maybe somebody in this group?
So if I can answer your question, our outreach specialist is a peer. We hired him from within the population. He has, he works part-time for us and runs the outreach program three days a week, runs our laundry program. He has great relationships with law enforcement. He reaches across and really works hard to try to present more nuanced to homelessness in general. And so, and he has lived experience for a long time. He's come out of the foster care system. He almost hits every single downer point for males that are homeless right now. Tremendous brain injury, the whole nine. He has been able to manage a lot of, got his license, and has demonstrated to us that he's responsible, shows up for work, he's on time, he does the job. I'm out there with him now because he can't handle the demand. We've gone from 12 meals three days a week to 20 in the last month and a half. There have been three more evictions, elderly females, just in the last week and a half. There's, the demand is increasing. And it's the timing at the end of the ORRAP June 30th deadline. And now people who are still behind in their rent don't have an ORRAP application across this and being evicted. And so we're just seeing an increase, but it's, it's far too much. So we're looking to hire a 1.5 FTD right now. We're flying the commission. So we can get Kirk some help and get a full-time person to do those other services, wraparound services for lines. So we, Kirk would love to sit at a table and represent the Gold Beach homeless population if he's welcome.
We also have about three volunteers on the line, and one of them has also had lived experience. So you guys figure out if we need the way you want it. If you get too big, you don't get anything done. So you might want to break up into subcommittees as you get going. And Ms. Hadley, did you want to be on that committee at all?
I would. I would also just like to add that Tara Johnson has been incredible as far as a wealth of knowledge. And so I don't want to speak on her if I have. I'm not sure that she's looking for a committee because she's really busy, but I do know that she's always more than happy or willing to share information, and I think she will be... always more than happy or willing to share information, and I think she will be an incredible resource for us.
Do you think it might be good for us to figure out a way to do a tour up there as well?
Yeah, exactly.
Great, thank you. Okay. Yes. Mr. Bard, Stretcher Bounce?
No, actually, Mr. Bard's.
Oh, okay.
I just, I'm looking at your list and listening to your conversation, and I want to point out to you that parking around the courthouse county complex is very limited right now. All of the parking spaces, all three parking lots are being used. The parking lot you're talking about over there, on average, has over 20 cars in it every day. It's the Sheriff's Department employees park over there, you have courthouse staff park over there, you have county staff park over there, jurors park over there, that's, and if you take this spot away, there is nowhere else for people to park who work up there. So I just want you to keep that in mind. I wouldn't consider that a viable spot, because there's just, there's no replacement for it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mayor Kaufman. I kind of want to tie in with what Chief Krieger was...
Jim May, Jim Boyce.
Jim May, can you stand up? I wanted to tie in with what Chief Krieger was saying about, you know, tonight, listening, we're talking about several different versions of homelessness, and I think we can all pretty much easily agree that if you saw a child homeless, that's a call to action. Someone that is victimized through no merits of their own, that's a call to action, but the focal point of what brought us here to start having a lot more of this conversation is in tandem with the ideas that it was to not make homelessness illegal. And so in that same fashion, the folks that come forward into that zone where those mismatches happened, where those decisions hadn't been made, are those transient folks that suffer, they do suffer through drug abuse, alcohol abuse, mental health issues for sure, they suffer through all those things, but they're at the forefront of it. A family that's living out of a tent, they don't really make the headline news in our area still. What makes the headline news is folks relieving themselves in public, different things like that. And so I think that there's been pushes for more housing. I spoke with Mr. Pergano today about doing accessory dwelling and taking advantage of the kickback that's there that will help bridge some of the material costs, and so things like that for that housing. But we're transitional housing is frightening to me for our area because it's not transitional. There's nowhere for you to go afterwards. It's a conversation everyone agrees, we don't have affordable housing in our area. So you put in transitional, you really have to look at that as affordable housing. But then we come back over to the folks that they're not going to meet the requirements of these shelters and these spaces that we want to talk about, these no drugs locations, certain levels of rules that you have to follow, there's certain responsibilities that are placed on you, you know, you need to be going and looking for jobs, you need to be, you need to actively better on yourself, that's the whole purpose of it, is to give you that chance. And so we face where I think it's a good conversation to have, but at the same time, I think that we need to kind of reorient ourselves in this workshop to look at ideas of what is going to help give law enforcement and folks like that some form of teeth to help, because I don't know what the rules are going to be, but if we have a place for you to camp, but it's a no-drug zone, and you suffer through drug abuse, and you're going to use drugs, and you get kicked out of there, do you technically have a location for you to go to? Do we just fall straight back into the same situation of now you are criminalizing homelessness because there's nowhere for Chief White to send them? And so maybe thinking about some of those issues that are going to come up, and if we can solve parts of that side, I think as a community, we're more than happy to quickly push towards things on this side for assisting folks that are just damn troubled. And so I just ask that folks kind of re-center themselves a little bit, think about some of those opportunities. The city of Portland, through ordinances, did make portions of their city drug-free zones. Perhaps those are solutions that will help us keep our high tourist areas clear of the folks that are having some abuse issues, to at least prevent that immediate downturn that's going to affect us, because if the community doesn't get any money, well then there's no way for them to assist anyone that's already here or anyone that plans to come here. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief White, do you mind if I put you on the first spot?
Please do.
So, one of the reasons I got in a hurry to have this first discussion, which was at the last meeting, was because I got a phone call from several individuals when there were some individuals staying in our parking park. And this is the kind of things that I got hit with. Okay, why don't you arrest them for littering? They're obviously littering. You have an answer for that?
Yes, they are. So, I'm going to interject in for just a moment, Mayor Kaufman, the, our officers, you mentioned, Chief Krieger mentioned frustration, besides having an overfilled jail, we can't, there was COVID restrictions, we couldn't put people in jail, we're talking about homelessness as if these people want it to be a different way. We want it to be a different way because we want our city back. Most of the folks that cause us concern in that we have issues with as a community don't want their situation to be different. They want it to be the way it is, or they don't want to follow the rules to have it the way that they could have it. So the things like the littering, defecating in public, they've created such a mess that they've been, some of these folks have been trespassed from every private business where they could use the restroom, including the county annex building, because they have done so much damage and created such a mess that they can't come back. So when we don't have any issues left, including the city doesn't provide garbage service, they feel that they're entitled to garbage service, so they just stack their trash on the ground, we do write them a ticket, and unfortunately, they don't, there's no consequences to a criminal charge or to violations, they just don't show up. We have one of our transients, now we have around 20 charges of criminal trespass against him in the last four weeks, and that's breaking into places to do whatever he wants. The problem is the city of Gold Beach, the taxpayers of Gold Beach pay $70 for every one of those tickets that we write. He has no intention of paying those fines to court, he doesn't have a job, and unless we want to steal his bottles every day, we're not going to get any money back from him. So the police, the one police option is to write a citation, because now with House Bill 48, those crimes against public, such as trespass, criminal mischief, disorderly conduct, they're not even jailable because the state of Oregon decided that if we're innocent until we're proven guilty, we shouldn't put innocent people in jail. So only until you've had a sentence imposed by a judge can you be put in jail. Understanding, a lot of these folks want to go to jail because they just are tired of the rain, and they will commit as many crimes as necessary until they get there. We have followed them around town as they smash windows out of buildings and write them tickets because they are not jailable offenses, until in one case, a man who we literally followed for the fourth call for service, one business after another, destroying property, finally saw the Shore Plains bus filled with senior citizens at the doctor's office, realized if I get in that bus and I take physical control of that bus with occupants in it, I bet I go to jail, and he was absolutely right. But that's what we're dealing with as a police department, even though we're trying to build relationships, we buy these people coffee, we buy them food, we try to establish rapport. One day we think we're winning, the next day the officer gets the coffee thrown back on him and a boulder thrown through the windshield of the patrol car at additional cost of the taxpayers of Gold Beach because he just felt like it. So, and again, that window doesn't get you, doesn't get you in jail either unless we can articulate that it wasn't thrown at the officer. So that's what we're dealing with. We're talking about creating a village for folks where we can tell them to go. The people that are a problem, they are not going to want to stop using drugs necessarily to go there, and they tell us that. They like it here because we can't tell them where to go because we don't have an option. So back to what you guys just said, yes, we are putting, we're rearranging things, we're talking about showers and toilets, yes, but ultimately, we're also talking about being able to establish rules, so Gold Beach is not necessarily a viable candidate for somebody that just doesn't want to live by the rules.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Chief White, do you think if it was a drug-use-okay zone, that the majority of individuals you encounter would go there if you asked, if you said you can't be here in the parking park?
No, they also don't get along with each other, and Ms. Hidalgo will tell you that she tries to provide services, and they can't even agree to occupy the same space while they get services that are being given to them that they need.
So there is a group that we can't help?
There's going to be a group of people that we can help, but we also need to be able to tell those that can't be helped that they're not welcome in Gold Beach.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Paris, I am going to push a button, and then you can have a floor, and there's the button, okay. You should be able to unmute now.
And I did, and I apologize, but I raised my hand officially to indicate that I wanted to participate on the work group if possible, and then I lowered it, and so I do not mean to play a problem. I have nothing to say.
I do have any...
I put in my information in the chat.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And so I did put it in the chat, but if you want to be in the work group, in case we don't have your contact information, if you could either give City Hall a call at the 541-247-7029, or you can email the city at apagano@goldbeacharea.gov, and he will push on that list. And Ms. Carter-Frits, that's your head.
Well, I just, I think before we get like too long of a list of names of what, who wants to participate, I think it's really important that we articulate what exactly we're discussing, because, and I mean no disrespect by saying this, but we can go down the rabbit hole talking about transitional housing and helping, you know, certain populations like veterans or people with mental health or whatever, that issue that staff, that we here at City Hall have, that Chief White has, that Chief Krieger has, is the transient population. So I just would like to say that very clearly and very loudly, that this is a work group to work on a transient, big whack camp. This is not, we're not trying to, at this particular time, trying to solve the whole transitional housing and all that. We have a critical issue with transients right now, that's the issue that we need to solve. I'm not saying that that other issue doesn't need to be discussed, it can't be discussed, but people that are putting their hand up to volunteer, we are talking about time, place, and manner, big whack, transient, location. That is what we are discussing. If you want to talk about the other stuff, that's great, but that's not what staff wants to talk about. So I just want to make that really clear, because I don't want to have staff time, and especially Chief White's valuable time, talking about transitional housing and things like that. That's not our critical problem right now. That can be discussed, but that's a different issue. I just want to say that out loud.
Okay. So that was going to come into my next part, which was what do we want from that work group? And from what I heard the council say earlier, we need the partner groups, who's going to be in charge, who's going to help bring in the services and support, which we've gotten some names tonight of organizations that are going to do that, and then what's it going to look like, and where's the funding going to come from? So those are the kinds of questions that are going to come in, and I think that when you get to a point where you want to talk to landowners and see if we can come up with something like that, we need to figure out who's going to make that conversation happen. So if I am on the right page, if that's what we want from the group, okay. So, we're good there. Mr. Farmer, did you still have something you wanted to say?
Yeah. Related to the time, place, and manner aspect, I just wanted to contribute there, that when you're looking, I like the term big whack, when you're looking at the perimeter of the location, you're also going to want to talk about the time, place, and manner use of it. One of the things that had to be done at Cold Bank Village, regardless of the restrictions you put in for the individuals that are in the camp, has been highly successful at Cold Bank. We, the city also had to address the perimeter of the camp so that individuals who were not compliant did not just hang outside of the fence. So time, place, and manner was also set up around the perimeter to disallow camping in that area. Another thing that could be looked at is public safety placards. Up here, folks can put a placard in their window at their request, they would receive it from the police department, and it makes it so the officer can interact with individuals on their property and commercial property, and hours that the individual may not want to be called if there's something going on in their business at 2:00 a.m., that the officer could intervene more actively without that indicator. That's all I have.
Okay. So the work group will work on some type of place and how that's going to work, and then can I ask staff to work on the time, class, and placement manner ordinance and possibly updating our camping ordinance?
When you say camping, we don't have a camping ordinance. We have...
We don't have no camping in Gold Beach?
Yeah, that's the ordinance, is no camping except for in an RV park. So there isn't an ordinance, it's just you can't camp except in an RV park. So yes, the time and place would include...
Would it be less?
Yes, but there's not an ordinance that deals just with camping, but the time and place would be that camping outside of an approved RV park would be allowed for the following purpose.
But right now, I don't think our ordinance is enforceable.
So I'm saying, we don't have an ordinance.
We have a part that says you can't camp here. We can't enforce that because Martin B. Voish, he says, they have a constitutional right to camp there.
We don't have anything in our code that says thou shalt not camp.
It says that you'll camp in there if you want. So that is not enforceable. That's my point.
No, it's just, it's in the zoning code, is that you can, if you're going to live in an RV, it has to be in an RV park, but there is nothing in our code that says you can't like live in a tent.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, there is no ordinance specific to camping, other than in the park. You are not allowed to camp in the park.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you willing to work on that?
Absolutely. I think it's absolutely necessary that we work on it.
Perfect. Councilor, again?
I'm going to talk with you about that, Joe Hayden.
Okay.
Please, please, go talk about that.
So, we're getting close to 8:30, we usually don't like to go beyond that. Is anybody else have a burning issue you want to mention, and something else we need to put together?
Who is going to work on the patient?
I think the work group needs to get together pretty quickly to do that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Chief Krieger.
Chief Krieger!
Does the location have to specifically be inside city limits or close?
If it's outside the city limits, we would have to worry about camping on there.
But would it accommodate our needs to have a place for them to go as a city?
Can I ask staff? My preference is that it's outside the city, but obviously I can't make that happen.
I just don't know if there was a legal, if there was a...
It sounded like in the case law that we read, that that might make it an undue verdict.
Okay, we'd have to probably drag them there.
Well, I'm not saying that has to be five miles away.
Yeah, but it's my understanding the county is not real open to anything that could be wrong, but I think that that might be a barrier.
Yeah, I just, I just was meaning if we had something that was adjacent to the city, what are our equal capabilities there? If we find a great spot, we might find a...
know how we're going to find a place to put a, you know, put a homeless shelter, just to keep us comfortable.
Well, this would be much smaller. This could be a city lot.
A little bit, but yeah.
No, wasteful, you're looking at a two acre, an acre, just a building.
Yeah, that's just what I was concerned about, because that would certainly open up some possibilities, if it was close. So, just if you're...
And I will want here to work on place, if we get some places identified. Sometimes my title helps. But then, Counselor, or, we don't have a counselor anymore. Mr. Pagano is really good at whining, dining people. Okay. I guess it's not whining and dining, it's schmoozing. He can talk to people, he won't talk to me. So, okay, so with that, we will get an email list together, info number list for the people that volunteered on the committee, and then you guys can establish who's going to be the chair, call meetings, and open there. There.
So Jeff, maybe we should sketch out some kind of timeline for some meeting?
Okay.
So finished product by July 2023, right? July, whatever that date is?
Well, the grant is to have something open by October.
All right. So finished product by October 2022.
At least groundwork.
Groundwork started.
Emma? Oh, Mr. Rock?
Thank you, Mayor.
Loud.
I know how to raise your hand if you want it. Okay. So I attended the meeting yesterday, without knowledge of some of these things going on around me, I, well, no, I gave up on current local politics a while ago, I don't care anymore. But I went to support a friend who was speaking, and as some of you in this room, they help me a little understand things that were said, they run in a wrong way, so I was like forced to stand up and say a thing, or do a thing, or whatever, if I do sometimes. Which somehow led to me being asked to come speak in this forum about some things going on, and in that, I have no connection to any of these projects going on, I don't support them, endorse them in any way, I don't oppose them in any way, I'm simply trying to figure out what's happening here. And I wanted to touch on the fact that I think we're missing a very intricate part of this conversation, from what I'm hearing from a lot of people, with the redundancies of blocked services, they'll spend tax money, some of these continuing things without really paying attention to what is going around the macro scale around us, and some of the issues that we're facing in many different directions. And what I mean by that is, our economy is failing right now, we've got GDP down two quarters, and we are in recession, I don't care if anyone wants to say it, or how we've got 9.21% CPI, we've got horrible things going on around us, and I mean, the parity on the euro, there's a lot of stuff. Money doesn't look good. We're in this really weird situation right now, where a lot of money was fabricated out of thin air during the COVID pandemic, printed up, and then distributed out for all of these little programs. It's now just barely getting to this level, though, when you look at what's available for funding for different programs and things, it's out, it's out of droves, because the way bureaucracy works, people are now facing the limits of having to disperse this money before they need required. So, for an example, I just this week was granted a very nice grant for a small project I decided to throw in an application on. So money's being given out very fast, there was less than a four-week period from applying for a grant to being given one. There was a $150,000 max on this grant I didn't, so you can feel me under, just whatever. There was a $4 million cap on this grant, they wanted you to spend as much money as they could, $150,000 at a time. So I got to do the grant, we can talk to them, whatever, they tell me at this point, we don't have anywhere enough applicants, so we're going to elect to use the provision of the application, which is, we'll give you the full disbursement, you can now have $150,000. Thank you very much, I win, wonderful. So then I went back to look at how many people were given grants, and what the reality was here, what it breaks down to, is in this one grant, those federal funds, they came down to us. 1.6 million was all that was able to be given away out of a $4 million pool, and because they got open new grants again, that means that the red neighbor of this money goes right back to the federal government. This money that we are all going to pay, the bill log that was printed and manipulated and now being sent down to us. So here's the moral of the story that I'm on a tangent with. People are missing the money right now, that's multiple millions of dollars that have people applying for here, could have been a couple hundred grand coming in to just start one community, if we were looking at allocating some funds appropriately. We speak about this massive, like, tax money thing, how we're spending tax money, where these services, services are tax money, there are things we do not get to choose to pay for, like for prison, for profit prisons, and feed, clothe, and shelter, we don't talk about those things. Property taxes go to schools, they'll feed the kids. We need another agency, right, that comes in to take our tax money once again, as funneled out through agencies, and says we want funds to a specific project, grant a budget, with all of us in this room, to some extent. So right now, we are sitting on the precipice of tons and tons of money getting thrown in the droves. Go look at what our system is, and see what agency is it giving out huge buckets of money to do literally anything? And there's a lot of people sitting in rooms just like this, discussing, you know, what's going to be the next step, let's do three or four meetings to get there. The time is now, I have no interest in sitting in any committees, I'm not going to put more time into it, I'm running five counties, and I'm very interested in how I allocate my money across five counties, to get an extent. What I'm telling you is, if you do ever decide to pull something together, make a decision before one was something, myself and many other nonprofits will be lining up to write money for these grants, to help fund these things, because when we're talking about what grants are, and when all these things come to a cleft, I'm not asking for money to just, like, imaginary do a thing, I'm asking specifically for positions, right, to run programs, so I want some specialty. I'm asking for a certain amount of time, 12, 24, 36 months. What I'm really doing is, I'm collecting a bunch of buckets of money that secure my staff to, I know that they'll be able to work for the next 12, 24, 36 months, regardless, based on allocation of these money. We need to, as an entire community, be figuring out how we are applying for grants that allow us to allocate for positions on a completely open market, right? We can ask for funding that is fair in the open market, not the money that people make here. This is how people can take the money back and do something with it. We have that opportunity. I'm writing grants, when I say, I need two to three people, I'm going to fund that for three years. That's three jobs, they'll be here for three years, regardless of what's going on. Six other agencies do that, regardless of the way over what we're doing, about 26 jobs to this town, they'll be funded for two to three years. If we see a financial collapse, if we see whatever we see, we individually can work together to support some very good money being spent here, in order to support these programs. So I really think that if we wanted to be fair to our society here, we would stop talking about, is this a homeless person, is this a disabled person, whatever bucket you fill into, and start looking at, how are we recapturing our tax money that was stolen from us, asking for it back and providing programs that we can do here? Because I assure you, I don't care if you guys pass this or anything else, but if you do pass it, I'm writing all the grants to get all the money to support whoever it is you guys have here, homeless, women and children, whatever it is, I will give every penny I can, and help other people do too. So start looking at how we're supporting this, and then stop writing, sorry.
Counselor, or, Martinez was first, and then Counselor Patterson, and then I would like to get to the board and get the list down, we'll get it out. Okay. Counselor, are you ready, or you have the floor?
I just, my children need my attention. I must go.
Okay.
I'm very sorry.
We're going to work on the timeline. And thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
I love you so much, thank you so much.
Okay, Counselor Madison?
Well, I was going to kind of kick it to myself, but Emma opened it up. You know, we are, we are talking about civil rights, we are talking about literal social security. We are, we are talking about the degradation of human services that has been on the spiral downhill since 2009, at the county level. When you look at what community development was provided in human services back then, and where we're at now, we're just going to start playing catch-up. You know, we used to have Mental Health Court, we used to have Children with Families Coalition, it breaks my heart, to really, and look at all of the committees and advisory boards that existed, that people were engaged in, that helped mitigate famous for being in these positions, and that's lost. Starla is still on here, her and I are working on some stuff. Starla, we just had a timeline today, showing kind of the hodgepodge of activities. We really do, just, you're in right, it's a state, we need to be resilient from recession, resilient from, you know, when the county decides they want to get rid of public health. Those are the things we really need to speak against, because now this makes this work even harder. And Emma, I will tell you that Mary Pat, and I, and the treasurer for Crazy Homeless Coalition, we are all part of a federal grant architect training right now, it's an eight-month course, and you might want to hide, because come October, when we're done, we're, we are on fire. You're on fire, and we're going to have this conversation, because I think what we had talked about today, too, is what's most frustrating, is when this agency or nonprofit appears applying for this, and not talking about it collaboratively, so that we are genuinely investing in the best interest and prioritizing those needs in the community, that it's haphazard. We're better together, and if we can collaborate and apply for something versus letting it go to some other applicant, because we don't have the numbers, or the qualifications, yeah, those are definitely the community conversations that need to be had, so thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, now let's break ground, a timeline, timeline right now. Okay.
I thought you had me.
Did you reach it? So we need to break ground by October, you mean?
What part of October?
31st. October 31st, 2022, we got to break ground, right?
What?
October 31st, 22. We have to break ground for that one grant. So break ground.
Break ground.
Sammy, Mary Pat wants to speak, and I was trying to find a time to interrupt.
Okay, can we get this done?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. It's not that you're not important, it's... Okay, so what are the steps to get there? We have to identify property.
Did we want to do a community survey? We talked about that a lot.
If we do a community survey, we're not going to be done by October. Not what this ever means.
If we don't do a community survey, how is it a survey, how... What do you mean? Was that not a gorgeous workshop tonight?
I've been scared of people calling me to get people off the street.
Yeah.
So I think this is, we've already got the feedback, unless you guys aren't getting any calls. It's up to you, you want to do a survey, we'll do a survey.
Well, I saw the survey results from Spain, they were informative, but it wasn't a big population sample of the people who participated.
It never is.
Yeah.
So I have a question, is the breaking ground considered if we were able to find a location and put up some type of shelter? A roof cover?
Good, good start.
So does that count as a breaking ground? Just getting our feet in there, starting something small?
Okay. Even like starting the fence?
Yes.
Installing the water hook up, something like that?
That's a federal movement in progress. That's a breaking ground.
We on the same page?
Yep.
Okay. So we got to identify the property, what else we get? Who are going to be the partners, and what are they going to do? Stephanie, can you help me here, Ms. Hadley? Sorry, it's your first name.
You're okay. I would, my suggestion at this point, honestly, would be to reach out to Tara with Deborah and Center, and I think maybe a smaller group of folks that have been really intimately involved in this, regroup, and we kind of make a list of action items of how to move forward, and then we encapsulate a larger committee, that would be my suggestion, instead of trying to figure all the to-dos tonight.
Regroup.
Regroup, yeah.
Okay, so can I ask you and Ms. Eldon Corbaker to start that?
Absolutely.
And then report back to the main group, and then that group will start a meeting from there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I think then that group can break into smaller groups to do pieces of it.
So using August and September?
Yeah.
To identify a property to be going.
That's going to be the hard one, but at the same time, while we're identifying it, the partners are providing the service, creating the rules, figuring out the insurance, figuring out some money to get started.
It's a temporary location for us to get somewhere for people to go, so.
Transient bivouac.
In the grant, is there a spot, is there a good, in the grant, is there, if we have to be breaking ground by October 31st, is there a time we have to be there until? Does the grant care?
No, not at this point.
So if we had a location that we could get for X number of months, and then we had to find another location, that would be okay?
Sure. Okay. Not ideally, but okay.
No, not ideal, but okay.
Okay, so do we have a plan? You want to adjourn?
It sounds like you're... I would like to hear from Mary Pat.
Okay. Mary Pat? Counselor Madison would like to hear from you. You have the floor.
Yes, first of all, I'm a little powerless, I feel like I'm not feeling about sheltering folks, come from working with our, we provide the county, that has ever sheltered folks before, and I feel like I'm not feeling about what you see, what you experience, has been for my agency, and I want to make it clear that what you see and happen within my agency is not the same as other agencies, is not the same, and I don't know what I did to fix that. So really, help me in on anything that you need, any top standing what you have. I feel bad, because not every, not every survivor, not every person with a street, not everybody who's on the house, it is same.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for the close? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Still moving.
Second?
Yes, second.
Okay. I don't know who's going first, I'll start with you. Call a question?
I.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.